Okay. I will start with our statement. Due to the COVID-19 emergency, the Planning Commission will conduct its essential business by electronic means rather than being required to gather in a quorum of the members physically present in the same location because it is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans. This meeting is in compliance with Governor's Executive Order Number 65 that will remain into effect until 11:59 PM on December 27, 2020. With that, I'm going to call us to order, and I said it has been determined that this meeting is electronically is necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare and a lot of the coronavirus. A recording of this meeting will be made available to the public online. I will determine a quorum. I will say your name, let me know if the chair is present. Shelley Smith.
President.
Paul Schwerer.
Here.
All right. Mayor Noas. He's waving, so I'll take that as a yes. Ms. Blackwell.
Here.
Mr. Comer.
Yes.
And Mr. Crabtree.
Here.
All right, I determine that all members are present. So we have a quorum. If we would, let's rise and we will do the National Anthem. Pledge of Allegiance, I'm sorry. Nobody's going to sing today. And I was going to ask you to start us out, Rupa, so I will ask you to start us out just with the Pledge of Allegiance instead of the National.
I was like, not singing. Okay, please do. Oh, wait, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands.
When they make them, under God.
Indivisible, liberal, and justice.
All right. Glad to get everybody started out on a light note. So we will, we have two sets of minutes to go over. One of them is our previous Planning Commission meeting, then also our Board of Zoning and Appeals. So let's first, if you would review the minutes of our previous Planning Commission meeting, and when everybody is ready, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve.
All right.
Second.
All right, so we have Ms. Blackwell with the motion, and I heard Mr. Crabtree with the second. All right, we get to do the fun time. I get to go through and ask everybody, we'll do a roll call vote. So as you appear on my screen, I will ask, Mr. Crabtree.
Yes.
All right. Mayor Noas.
Here. Yes.
All right, Ms. Blackwell.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Comer.
Yes.
And Mr. Schwerer.
Yes.
All right, and I am a yes as well. All right. The minutes have been approved, all right. Next in front of us would be the minutes from our most recent Board of Zoning Appeals that was held on October 19, 2020. Once y'all review those, if you would let me know. I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, I have Ms. Blackwell with the motion for approval of the minutes, and Mr. Schwerer with the second. All right, and we will go with the roll call vote. Paul, you're first up on my screen, you're the last one to talk, so.
Yeah, approved, yes.
Mr. Crabtree?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Blackwell?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Comer?
Yes.
And Mayor Noas?
Yes.
All right, and I am a yes as well, so let's approve those minutes as well. So any reports from staff or officers, Ms. Moody?
I would like to share with the Planning Commission that we, the city has hired a new senior planner that will start on Monday, November 30. We're very excited. Her name is Mary Samoniego, and she'll be moving to Tallahoma from the city of Tampa, Florida, where she's most recently been there, I believe, seven years, and has an extensive background, maybe about 25 years total, of local government planning experience in a variety of different communities in different states. And we look forward to her bringing her knowledge and experience to the position, and cannot wait for you to meet her.
That is great news to hear. I know you're excited as well. So, all right. If that being said, we do not have any old business, so we are going to move to new business. First on our agenda is the East Deckard Street Right-of-Way Surplus Request. Ms. Moody, is there anything that you'd like to let us know?
I have been working with this applicant for the last couple of months. This property is addressed as 320 South Polk Street. It's a nonconforming lot, a legal nonconforming lot, though. It is, it's 10,000 square feet, 50 feet by 200 feet, and he's looking to add an additional 25 feet of width to the property and 200 feet long, and it'll go into the East Deckard Street Right-of-Way. My understanding from talking with the applicant is that originally he was hoping to gain enough additional property. This, it is zoned R2, and so he was looking to gain enough additional property to either convert the single-family home to a duplex, or to possibly subdivide the property and have another home brought in on the back half of the property. Now, this does not accomplish either of those things. There is not enough right-of-way to give to create a 20,000-square-foot lot, but now he's looking at this additional property as helping him maybe to build a two-car garage on the property.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Let me go through the rules of public hearing. I will open up the public hearing. You are given two minutes. Please state your name and your address. If you are multiple people wanting to speak, or that we have multiple people wanting to speak, but they'll nate their time, I would ask that you would immediately say who you're donating your time to when I open the public hearing. With that, I'm going to open this up for the public hearing. Anybody like to speak about the, speak about the East Deckard Street Surplus Request? All right, ours none, so I will close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion to open for discussion.
Move to approve.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Blackwell, and a second from Mr. Crabtree. All right, any discussion, any questions, discussion about this?
Mr. Chairman, it's Ray Noas. I've taken a look at this property, and as Ms. Moody has indicated, selling this right-of-way really doesn't give the owner the option to do anything that he's really wanted to do. Secondly, it would be really just spot selling. If we were going to make a comprehensive plan to sell that right-of-way, I'd like to see us do it more of the length of the East Deckard Street, not just for one block at a time. So I would suggest that this is not an appropriate sale of property.
Okay. And this, we actually do not vote on the sale of this. We give either a favorable or unfavorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen. So just to let y'all, I'm sorry if I didn't say that to begin with. All right, is there any other comments, questions? If not, I will call the question, and we will vote. We are voting on if this is a favorable, sending a favorable, right now it's, we are going to send a favorable motion to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen. So Mayor Noas?
No.
Ms. Blackwell?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crabtree?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Schwerer?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Comer?
Yes.
All right. And I will vote yes as well. That was six to one for a favorable recommendation to be sent to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen. All right. Moving to our next one, it is the, this will be subdivision plats. This is going to be Barnes, Fly, Blue Creek, Blue Creek Road Minor Subdivision Plat. These will also all be public hearings, but first I will ask, Ms. Moody, do you have anything you need to add to this?
I'll just introduce the item. It is located at 2232 Blue Creek Road in our Franklin County Urban Growth Boundary. The applicant has indicated to create two lots for residential development from an existing 10-acre parent tract, and it's near the intersection with Turkey Creek Drive. And currently, the land is agricultural undeveloped property. And each of the lots would be about 0.81 acres, or just over 35,000 square feet.
And this is in our urban growth boundary, correct?
Yes.
All right. Once again, I will open this up to public hearing. Two minutes, state your name and your address, and if you're going to donate your time, please speak up in the beginning so we can get it all at once. I'm opening the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak about the Blue Creek Road Minor Subdivision for Barnes and Fly? All right. I will close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, that was Mr. Crabtree with the motion, and I do believe Ms. Blackwell with the second. All right, we have the motion to approve. Discussion amongst the board. Any questions, any thing?
Mr. Chairman, I'm very familiar with this property. It's out in the area where I live, on the southwest side of town. Everything around it is all residential housing and things like that, and adding more residential housing out there won't hurt a thing. In fact, it'll, it'll improve that area out there.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bass, I saw you did the survey. Is there anything you'd like to add?
Sure. We put it through the Development Committee, answered all the comments. One of the comments was prior TDEC approval. I believe we have satisfied that requirement with a signature proof of TDEC approval before, before it got approved by the Planning Commission. And so we're seeking approval tonight, hoping to go ahead and move forward with this division.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Anybody else? If not, I will call the question, and we will do a roll call vote. All right. Mr. Comer?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Schwerer?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Crabtree?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Mayor Noas?
Yes.
And Ms. Blackwell?
Yes.
I will vote yes as well, so that is unanimous seven in favor. All right, moving on. Next is the Markham-Coppers Creek Minor Subdivision Plat. Public hearing, but Ms. Moody, do you have anything you'd like to add before we open the public hearing?
This property is located in the northeast quadrant of the city, near the intersection of Avoca Lake Road and Copperus Creek Road. Both are county roads, and this property is in Tallahoma's Coffee County Urban Growth Boundary. He's proposing four residential lots, about 0.8 acres in size, again, 35,000 square feet, and that low, low-density residential zoning for Coffee County.
Thank you very much. All right, once again, we're about to open the public hearing. Anybody that would like to speak, state your name. You have two minutes. If you are donating your time, please speak up to begin with. And with that, I'm opening the public hearing. With that, I will close the public hearing. So if I would, it could entertain a motion so we can have discussion amongst the board.
Move to approve.
All right, I think Ms. Black will beat you out just a little bit, Mr. Noas, I'm going to give you the second. All right. Discussion amongst the group.
Okay. I'll bite on this. I, this is, I'm not, I just wanted to bring it up because sometimes, usually when we have minor subdivisions, it's to subdivide to two, and I understand that this does technically meet the requirement because under five lots would be considered a minor subdivision. But I would call your attention to re-subdivision of land, 1.9, 1-9.2. Whenever a parcel of land is subdivided in, the subdivision plat shows that one or more lots contain more than double the minimum required area for the zoning district, the Planning Commission may have reason to believe that any such lots might be re-subdivided into smaller building sites in the future, or if it's leading to a future subdivision. Just wanted to make sure, because these are our big lots, and as many of you know, I was in land acquisition for a major builder in the greater Davidson, Williamson metro areas, and so I just wanted to, you know, bring your attention to the fact that one acre is 43,560 square feet, 3.2 acres puts you just under the threshold, that puts you at about seven lots. So just, is this, is this the start of something, or is this, is that just what it is? Just anytime that something comes just right at that threshold, I just want to make sure, I guess, because it's, it's always.
What I know about the project, I think also Tim Daniels, the developer constructor may be on the phone, but what the, what the owner has shared with me is that this is a subdivision from a larger, and I provided a map of this, the parent tract is nearly 30 acres. And this initial, these initial four lots are meant to stand alone and remain in the county, but we are considering and working towards a plan of services for an annexation request for an adjacent 12 and 1/2 acres that the owner's proposing to develop and have annexed into the city so that it can be developed with approximately 40 homes on city sewer. So these four lots are allowing them to get started with construction, but they're intending for those to be standalone lots that are served off of Copperus Creek Road and remain in the county, served with septic systems. The 12 and 1/2 acres immediately to the west will be served off of Avoca Lake Road, and as part of the annexation petition, we're looking at annexation of that portion of Avoca Lake Road coming into the city with the 12 and 1/2. So that will be at a future Planning Commission, because as I said, we're having to work on an interlocal agreement with Coffee County, and also the departments are putting together the plan of services and considering that right now.
Right, okay, which is exactly how I would have done it. So I just, I'll, can you, the part of 1-9.2, the Planning Commission may require that subdivision development of such parcel of land allow for the future opening of public ways and ultimate extension of adjacent public ways, is what you're saying, that you're working on?
I don't know if that's what I'm saying. I'm not looking at this as a Phase 1 of a future development. I'm really just looking at it as the four lots standing alone.
Question. Approving this, would this preclude this becoming a part of the city if the rest of the lots are annexed?
I do know that annexation at this time has to be done at the owner's request, and I don't anticipate the owner requesting annexation.
Isn't it true that the, that for them to become a part of the city, they have to have our services and facilities such as sewer and water and everything before they could do that?
No, not exactly. The plan of services allows each of the departments to outline what services they'll be able to provide and a timeline for when they will be provided. I think with this specific 12 and 1/2 acres, the developer intends to extend services to make them available.
And have they cleared the, the requirements for four septic tank that it perks and all that sort of stuff?
Yes, I believe so.
Does TUA currently service, provide water to the contiguous lots?
Yes. It's Duck River Electric and TUA Water Service.
And this did get the required TDEC signatures?
Believe it does. That has been a very contentious issue of late, so yes, I believe so.
To Shelley's concern about the subdividing, it almost, it seems fairly consistent with the four lots to the north of it, maybe even a little bit smaller than those four lots to the north of it. So as, I mean, well, yeah, maybe, but it's, 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 it may be a stretch to say that there's going to be, that we're, that they're chipping away at a large development.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just checked. I do, on my desk, I have the signed, TDEC-signed plat for Copperus Creek for these four lots.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions, discussion? All right, with that, I will call the question, and we will roll call vote. Mr. Schwerer?
Approve. Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mayor Noas?
Yes.
Mr. Comer? All right, he's waving yes, I'll take that, and Ms. Blackwell?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, that would be seven in favor. All right. Next would be Anderson, the Old Manchester Highway Minor Subdivision Plat. Ms. Moody?
Hi.
This one is in, and many of these are tonight, so you'll hear this. This is in our urban growth boundary again. It's at 4212 Old Manchester Highway, located east of the city, in an area right between the new Manchester Highway and the old Manchester Highway. The applicants indicated that they'd like to subdivide and create two residential lots for single-family dwellings. The proposed lots are very close to 1.4 acres each in size, and, and again, my understanding is that Alan Charbonneau signed off on a version of this plat, and then caught an error where the numbers of Lot 1 and Lot 2 were reversed. So now we're just waiting for him to sign the, a corrected version of the plat.
All right. With this, it's a public hearing as well, so I will open it for public hearing. If you have anything to say, state your name and address. If you're going to volunteer your, donate your time, please just do that in the beginning. With that, I open the public hearing. Any comments from the public on the Anderson-O-Manchester Highway subdivision? All right, nothing. So I will move to entertain the motions to open discussion.
Move to approve.
All right. All right, Mr. Crabtree has made the motion, and Mayor Noas has seconded. All right, any discussion amongst the commission? All right. Since no discussion, I will go ahead and call the question. So, let's begin. Mr. Schwerer?
Yes.
Mr. Crabtree?
Yes.
Ms. Blackwell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Comer?
Yes.
Mayor Noas?
Yes.
I will be a yes as well. All right. On to the next piece of business as well. This is going to be the Unity Rutledge Falls Minor Subdivision Plat. Ms. Moody?
Hey. Also in our Coffee County Urban Growth Boundary, at 21 Rutledge Falls Road, east of the city, on the west side of Old Manchester Highway, right where it intersects with Concord Road and Rutledge Falls Road. This applicant is proposing subdivision to create three residential lots for single-family dwellings. Each lot is generally 0.8 acres, and again, has met, the TDEC has signed off on the septic systems for these lots.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Moody. All right, once again, public hearing. State your name and address, two minutes. If you're going to donate your time, please let me know in the beginning. All right, I am opening the public hearing for the Unity Properties Rutledge Falls Road. Anyone like to speak? All right, I will close the public hearing, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
All right, I will give this one to Mayor Noas, and second to Ms. Blackwell. All right, any discussion amongst the group?
Yes, this is Bill Comer. This intersection is, has a lot in common with intersection on Rida Creek Road and Avoca Road we've talked about so much. It has the same angle coming in, maybe even worse. It's very dangerous intersection. And the city engineer has made a statement that the driveway should be on the north side of that first lot there, Lot Number 3, I believe it is. And what I'm wondering, if is any way that we can approve this with the stipulation that that driveway be on that side? Because I think it would really add to the danger to have cars coming in and out right there in that Y-shaped intersection.
If I may speak up here, Mr. Comer, this is Nicholas Northcutt. I'm the surveyor who did this property, and we did go ahead, and at the request of the engineer, we did include a note on the plat to that effect that says that that first lot down there, the driveway does need to be on the northerly side of that lot as to allow as much space as possible between the intersection at that driveway.
Okay.
By, by subdividing this, we're leaving 7.5 acres to the By, by subdividing this, we're leaving seven-point-five acres to the, to the west, landlocked? Is there an easement plan, or what's the future plan for that?
There are actually two access strips. If you'll notice, on the north and the south of Lot One and Lot Three respectively, there's a fifty-foot strip that would access, so nothing's being landlocked.
I got you, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? All right, if not, I will call the question, and we will look for the approval. Mr. Schwer.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Comer.
Yes.
Ms. Blackwell.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Crabtree.
Yes.
And I think yes for me, so that would be, I think I got everybody, unanimous, seven to zero. Motion passes. All right, we go for another Rutledge Falls. And this would be the Swan Rutledge Falls Road Minor Subdivision Plat. Ms. Moody.
Yes, this one is at the south corner of Greenwood Road and Rutledge Falls Road in the Coffee County Urban Growth Boundary. It is, from, from what I could observe, it's an undeveloped wooded lot. And the applicant's proposing to create three residential lots for single-family dwellings that would all front Rutledge Falls Road. Each lot is proposed at one, one-and-a-half acres. And I just received the signed plat today from T-Deck, and otherwise meets all of the requirements.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Moody. All right, once again, this is a public hearing. So I will open it up, state your name, your address, and you have two minutes. If you're donating, please mention it at the beginning. With that, I open the public hearing on the Swan Rutledge Falls Road Minor Subdivision Plat. All right, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Vote to approve.
Second.
All right, I think we had Mr. Mayor Nois, and I think Ripper beat you in there, Mr. Crabtree. All right, any discussion amongst the planning commission? All right. If lack of there, I will go ahead and call the question. And we were looking for the approval of the Swan Rutledge Falls Minor Subdivision Plat. Mayor Nois.
Yes.
Mr. Crabtree.
Yes.
Ms. Blackwell.
Yes.
Mr. Schwer.
Yes.
Mr. Comer.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
And I will be a yes, that would be seven, zero, motion passes. All right, now we are to site plans. These are still public hearings, though, but would you please introduce the Kearl Airport hangar?
Yes, so this will be on the site, on the Telahoma Airport property. Somebody may be familiar with where the Vanderbilt Life Flight is now. We located it directly behind that. It's proposed at eight thousand square feet and will be addressed as, I believe, three-twelve North Taxiway Lane. They're complying with all the height restrictions and all other requirements. We, they did propose, because they're building between two existing hangars, there will be ten feet of separation on either side. And they have agreed to two-hour fire-rated walls for all exterior walls.
All right, thank you, Ms. Moody. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing for the Kearl Airport Hangar site. State your name, your address, two minutes. If you're donating, please mention it at the beginning. With that, I'm opening the public hearing.
Just Stacy Roach, I work for Kearl Construction, so I'm here to answer any questions that you guys might have.
All right, thank you, Stacy. Anybody else? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion. Vote to approve. All right.
Second.
All right, we have Mr. Crabtree with the motion, and Ms. Blackwell with the second. All right, any discussion within the commission? All right. I will take that as we're ready to move to the call of the question. I will, there are a call vote. Mr. Crabtree.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Schwer.
Yes.
Mayor Nois.
Yes.
Mr. Comer.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Blackwell.
Yes.
All right, and I am a yes. I did get everybody correct. All right, so seven passes. All right, moving to the last item on our agenda. This is going to be the Harton Lot Two Star Physical Therapy Site Plan. Ms. Moody.
This project is, you'll remember, I believe it was last month, we approved the subdivision plat that created the three commercial lots at the corner of Lakeway Place and Cedar Lane. This is a site plan for Lot Two of that subdivision plat. And the applicant's proposing a new thirty-two-hundred-square-foot office building, medical office building. And all of the use is consistent with zoning. You'll see there were several comments from the city engineer that were requesting be addressed. And one of them that I did not have time to talk, I believe Mr. Headley, the architect's available on the Zoom meeting with us, I didn't have time to talk with him today. But one of the items that came up from staff was that we had thought that the driveway would be centered on the property line between Lot One and Lot Two to minimize the number of driveways and their proximity to one another. And I believe on this proposed site plan, there's, it isn't shown that way. So I thought if Mr. Headley could maybe speak to that, we'd like to hear more about whether he, it does intend to make that revision, or if there's been some other conversation of why we won't have that revision.
This is Jerome Headley. Regarding your comment about the shared driveway, is I, I was unaware of that until last week. I have, I went back and did a study on how to do it. I've, we can make it work. I've contacted, and my client is aware of it. I've talked to him, he says he has no problem with it, but there's some legalities because of the various property owners involved. They have to work out a legal document on it. So I, I'll, I can have all the, I'll have the site plan updated along with the grading and drainage plans that were submitted to Scott for him to look at from our, from my civil engineers. And we can get that, as soon as I can have their work, I can forward on another copy of the civil drawings for Scott to look at and comment on. But we will work on that, and I'll be in contact with my client tomorrow about the outcome in this meeting, so that they can work on the legal document.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I would just ask that the planning commission make their approval subject to these comments being addressed. And so that item is included in the comments.
Thank you, Ms. Moody. All right, this is a public hearing. So I will open the public hearing for the Harton Lot Two Star Physical Therapy Site Plan. State your name, you have two minutes in your, state your address. If you're going to donate your time, please, say it at the beginning. So I'm going to open the public hearing. All right, I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion, so to open discussion.
Move to approve.
All right. I have a motion for Ms. Smith.
Do we have to make a motion, though, with the, with what Mrs. Moody said?
That's a good question. I would say, yes, we would probably need to make the motion stating the recommendation to that.
You would say move for approval, subject to staff's comments being addressed. And the staff comments are in the staff report.
Move to approve, subject to the staff recommendations that the site plan meet all the development standards required by the tolerance in ordinance, landscaping maximum lot coverage and minimum setbacks. What else did I miss? Or do I just have to say, subject to staff's recommendations?
I would say, subject to staff recommendations.
There you go.
All right, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Mayor Nois seconds that. All right. Open for discussion, any questions, any discussion amongst?
Mr. Chairman, my understanding of what Mr. Headley said was that he was going to take this back to the people who are the investors and owners in this property and stuff. And we really don't have a full agreement that they're going to do what we're asking right now. So my question is, should we hold off on approving anything until we finalize that last little bit to make it much easier on us?
This is Jerome Headley again. It's just a matter of getting a legal doc, getting, there are several parties involved. And a legal document needs to be drawn up about this. And my client's attorney can be working on it tomorrow very easily. So I can have, we can have that as part of the documentation for this, for the Stars Physical Therapy Building.
Right, my understanding is that it's just transactional at this point, is that correct?
Say that again.
Oh, my understanding is that at this point, it would just be transactional, as you said. It's just a transactional, you just need to get the document signed and that it's not, it's just a transactional.
That's, that's my understanding, because I just, a couple things. One thing that came up initially, apparently they were unaware of the easements, the twenty-foot easement in an east-west direction on the south property line of the Stars Lot. And then the, on the east property line, Cedar Lane, there is a private ten-foot easement. And that easement is to allow for, when Lot One is developed, that they can bring their sewer down and tap into the sewer that's going across the south property line.
Right.
So they had a concept initially that I was, I've seen it, but I was not part of it. But then when the easements surfaced, that changed the way how things were going to need to be done.
So it's more or less just amending the description of the property in the real estate contract?
Between the various property owners, yeah.
The contracts, yes, the real estate contracts, so it's just going to fix that description.
Yes, that's my understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Headley. Any other discussion amongst the commission? All right, with that, I will call the question. Move, motion is for the approval, including the comments from the staff notes. With that, Mayor Nois.
Approve.
Okay. Mr. Crabtree.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Schwer.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Comer.
Yes.
Ms. Blackwell.
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, that would be seven, motion passes. Ms. Moody, do we have any other new business?
No, we don't.
All right. Next meeting will be Monday, December twenty-first, 2020, will be Zoom again. And I do believe I'll still follow my statue. Do we have to vote to close? I forget.
If we're done.
If there's no further business, if there's no further business, you can adjourn the meeting without a vote.
All right, then let's just adjourn this meeting, and everybody have a great evening.